Okay, welcome to the June 25th, 2024 Village Buchanan Workshop Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the good public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as a circle.
Alright. Okay, thank you. So we got a busy agenda this evening. We're gonna go right to the roadway improvement project for 2024. We have George Palmer, our engineer, with us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. We did open the bid for the 2024 road improvements last week, Wednesday, and we had a budget of $640,000. Surprisingly, the high bid was 640, which is good. And then it progressed down from there. The low bidder, Consortium, has done work in the village in the past. Some of it was good and some of it was questionable. We had him redo a section of Tate a few years back when he did win the bid, and after that, he didn't come back for a couple of years, but he's throwing his hat in the ring again. I did speak to him tonight. He intended, in the previous bid, he intended to leave the millings with the village. We did that in the past. We left it at the compost site, and then he stored it, and then he took it away. So he told us, he actually told me today, he said, "Well, if I have to take it away, that's another like $23,000 if I have to haul it away," because I guess the rules are changing now, because right now he uses a... He's got a strategy that he has that he... And it's not very union-friendly. I don't know, Anthony likes to follow the union rules.
Well, depends on where he's dumping.
Yeah, that's it. So, and after this year, when he goes to dump, he has to pay the union prevailing wage all the way to where he gets, usually it's where you get it from, which is Thale. So that's where he's gonna get his asphalt, so he's gotta pay the union wage there and back. So he has to haul it. It's another $23,000 added on to this. So it's roughly 277 rather than 254. But it's still way less than the budget, which is good. The only problem is the, he can start. I asked about starting. We have a concern every year, because everyone gets started late, because they have schoolwork and other work. So this, we asked him, "Can you start? When's the soonest you can start?" He said, "I can start in August." That's as soon as he could start. And he's good with all his numbers. We went through each one of his line items. I told him his catch basins are low. Other line items were low. He said, "I can hold my numbers." So, so I think, I don't want to give you a recommendation until I talk to you before the, your meeting next week. So that's why at this workshop, I wanted to give you that, to get this information and see if we want to go with the low bidder.
So which, which roads were these? Because we had talked about a whole bunch of roads that almost came to a lot more than that.
Yeah, we did. This is our whole list except for Broadway. That's what we said in our meeting from last month. So that came out to, in our estimate, which was the high guy, was Peter Landy at 600. We had around $600,000. And that was, it was right on the number. So it seems like people are very hungry for work, so.
So the roads I remember were Seward?
Seward.
Shed?
Shed. Sunnyside.
Sunnyside, right?
And then we had the, the, uh, Fat Sal's parking lot and Tate Avenue in front of that.
Oh, the coming into the village, into Tate Avenue, up to the Circle.
Up to the Circle, yeah.
By the postal office.
Yep. And then we had some patches at the Highway Garage. So, since this is so low, don't know if you want to expand any of this to cover your, yeah, because you have fund balance, right? So you want to spend it. So do we want to expand it and ask him, can he hold his prices for doing other streets or the whole parking lot at Village, at the Highway Garage? Or, we talked about Broadway, but we said, "Let's hold off on that and let's see what certain Tate can chip into that before we start going doing that." Or is there something we want to do at Lenz Cove? I know that you guys have a paving machine and you were gonna try it out there and do some things out there, but I'm not sure where we're at with that. And I know I talked to Scotty. He wanted a couple loads of the millings to use with his machine. So, as a matter of fact, you could take all the millings and level up, throw them all through the whole parking lot there. And you'd have a different kind of surface. You'd have more of a gravelly type of surface than what you have now, but it wouldn't have all the undulations in it.
All the lumpy bumpy?
Although, yeah, I drove through there tonight to check it out again. Every time I go down there, I feel like the it keeps sinking more and more. I don't know why.
Still settling, yeah.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
When was the last time Consortium did business with us in the village?
Two years ago.
And what was the outcome? Was it a favorable review as to his quality of work?
His quality of work with, on Tate, his quality of work on, what was the road? I think he did all of Tate was the issue. And then there was a section of Tate from like Fourth to second or fourth to first. I forget which section that was. That had to be totally redone. So he totally redid that section, and then he had to come back and we made a deal with the village to do some crack sealing as well. So it wasn't a it wasn't a great experience. So we did have some problems. He did try to make good on it. He did make good. He tore some out, redid it, but...
And then my other question is, in regards to the millings, where would, where would they be stored? If, if he's not gonna haul them out, where, where are we gonna keep them?
Well, we, we use some millings for the compost. We have a road behind the, behind the fields where we put some millings for our compost road. We bring our leaves back there. The village brings them back there.
Right.
And over the years, I know Bob has asked for one or two truckloads or whatnot to help that road, because that's kinda...
Back by the salt shed.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's, it's actually, you go up past the field and you go back behind, like, home plate behind there. Because we put our leaves and whatnot back there.
I know they can use more back there, because it's still sinking. That was never a road. That was just a spot where we dumped our leaves, but we the machines are sinking back there.
Yeah.
So I know that they can use more back there.
So we, we do have a need for it, so we can utilize that.
Yeah, we can utilize that. We can utilize it there, or we can use, so whatever we don't use is a savings to that $23,000, so. So if you, if you put it all at Lenz Cove and you spread it all out and just evened it all out, that would be a way to save $23,000, so.
Yeah, but that's not what he's char, he's charging you for the trucking.
That's what he, that's what he said to me, that that's what the extra trucking would cost.
That's, that's incorrect. Absolutely. Because if you go over to Inter County, the square yardage is the same, and the number is very similar, is it not?
Yes, it is.
That's part of the trucking as well.
Yeah, I called, I called Inter County as well to confirm, and they haven't called me back. So I'm, I'm waiting actually to confirm.
And if you go even to ELQ, that line item is, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's $12,000 more, but it's, it's in the ballpark.
But, yeah.
Right, it's 82.
It's the unit price that's higher.
Yeah. And then you got 82, 115, and 86.
Well, their unit price is higher per square yard.
Right.
But he's also charging you for, per square yard for the trucking with the milling cost. And now he's adding $23,000 on it?
Yes, because that's what he's saying. And you can, you can reject it on that, too.
No, I mean, I, I have, I, I have a question for him on that, but I don't want to say it out loud, but it, it seems that that, he's already charging us for the trucking. So if you were to spread the millings in our yard, it's a savings for him.
Yes.
Not for us.
Well, he, he told me today it would cost him $23,000 more. That's...
But he's already hitting you for the trucking anyway with the $70,000 he's charging per square yard. The milling, that's, that should be milling, that should be cleanup and everything.
You're saying it should be included in the $69,000?
$6 is your unit price per square yard, right?
Right.
Per yard. Yeah, so that's included in that price. I'm just telling you, because I, I know.
It should be, and it should be in there. I mean, you...
So he's saying he wants another 20, just to make sure, he wants another $23,000 to haul.
All the way.
So if we take in, we take in his estimated 11,000 square yard, yeah. And we spread 6,000 square yards on site. We save him.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we do.
Not us, though.
Not us.
We're still paying the $69,000. You following what I'm saying?
I'm following what you're saying, yes, yeah.
So his unit price is low, but, and he's a non-union. He can't even, these other companies can't compete with him because he's non-union.
Correct.
And, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it being non-union. I do have a problem with being non-union. Let's, let's get that out there. But his quality of work, I do have a problem. And it's been a problem before. And I know in other municipalities, it's also been a problem.
Correct.
Yes. And he's gotten thrown out of other municipalities because of his quality of work.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I was hesitant to give you a recommendation before we had this work session meeting. I don't want to put a recommendation out there just because he's the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
I want to talk to you as a board to find out if you even want, so.
No, and I appreciate that. I mean, this is the way it should be done. I mean, I feel like we should hash it out. Look at the, look at these line items and see. I mean, the square yardage that, like I just said, like, if, say he, we use all of that.
Yeah.
Is he gonna, is he gonna credit us?
We should get a $23,000 credit.
Well, whatever he's, whatever that, you know, whatever he's got on top of not just a milling of trucking, because he's already, there's already a trucking number worked into that price.
Yeah, it's cooked in there somewhere.
You would think.
It has to be, because otherwise the other ones, they're, all these numbers, it's all cooked in there somewhere.
It should be.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe he needs to, he needs to, you need to ask him that question again.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
So George Anthony, this can go to both of you, whoever can answer it. The millings, right? Will that really benefit us over at Lenz Cove? For the time being, as some kind of a Band-Aids, so to speak?
You want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So then we can use it somewhere else?
If you want to use it to spread for stockpiles, stuff behind, build roads with it, yes. You, you know, you're, you're gonna have runoff, and you have the river there.
Yeah, it's gonna, well...
It'll wash away.
Yeah, well, you need to compact it.
I wouldn't even...
Compact it.
It compacted, roll it, and then you have to probably treat it with an emulsion on top.
You're gonna have to maintain it.
And then you're gonna have to maintain it. It's almost like an oil, oil and stone kind of road you'd have to do.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that way, it, it emulsifies and it, we have it actually behind the sewer treatment plant. And we piled it, and the sun beat on it, and now you can't even hit it with a jackhammer and get it out. As hard as a rock. So it does, in the sun, it does come back together, but it also crumbles apart. So it's a...
It depends on how it's applied. If it's, if it's applied the correct way, then it'll stay state. But even when he stockpiles it, if he leaves that stockpile there for more than, more than two months, it's gonna turn into a solid pile of blacktop.
Yeah, so he's not doing us any favors by, by doing it.
No, we'd have to spread it out ourselves, do stuff to it, so.
So Lenz Cove is not an option. Good idea, but not an option.
No, I don't, unless you're gonna, if you're gonna...
That's why I just wanted it, you know, I thought maybe a temporary fix for the time being, make it, you know, somewhat.
Good question.
Well, we used, last year, we used the millings over, off of Broadway, where the road was...
Truck pull-off.
Yeah.
Truck pull-off?
Yeah, because that was, actually, the road was getting ready to collapse. So that was a good use of those millings for that.
Yeah, because you have no curbs over there.
I mean, if we could build roads with them, you know, behind the sewer treatment, I have no problem with that. I mean, millings are great. It's a great application for stuff like that, but...
You try to reuse it when you can. It's a squish savings, so.
For a parking lot, I, I don't like it. I don't like it for a public access parking lot.
Okay. Just wanted to throw it out there, that's all.
Yep.
Thanks, George.
Quick question?
Yeah.
On the bid for George, regarding the millings, was it required in the bid that they had to truck it out? Or was it their option to leave it or to truck it out?
So it says to, to leave or to truck as per village engineer.
Okay.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It's to, to leave it or to truck it out as per the village engineer. So, so again, if we had a use for it, we'd say, "We want it." If we say, "Truck it out," "Truck it out," include it, so.
Did any other contractors ask you to leave it in place?
No.
No.
And then when we award bids, it's the lowest responsible.
Responsible bid, yep, correct.
So the board has to make a decision if they, you know, they want to go with the lowest bidder or the next bidder up.
Correct.
And George, what was the problem on Tate Avenue? They had to redo it. Was that because of the gas line that they ran there where it was sunk?
No, it was just the way they laid the asphalt. Either their machine was a problem, what happened? It had like ripples in it.
The heat wasn't working on the screed.
The heat, something wasn't, something wasn't working.
That's, that's, a roller operator was going too fast.
So it was a workmanship. It was a workmanship issue, and either/or it came cold, the heat wasn't working, the hot body, whatever it was, they missed, it doesn't take much to have it go long, and that's what happened, so.
And Mayor, can I have one more question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
George, out of, out of all the other remaining bidders, are they all union?
Uh, I know...
Inter County, ELQ, Peter Landy, Gentile.
I know ELQ. I know Peter Landy is...
Inter County is too.
Inter County is?
I'm not sure about Gentile. I don't know.
Neither am I. Gentile, I'm not sure about. The other two are. Inter County, if you say they're inter, uh, union, then...
I have a question. If the work of Consortium is questionable, do you know the, the quality of work of the other companies that are bidding?
Uh, Inter County I haven't worked with before, but ELQ and Peter Landy, yes, they've both worked here in the past, and they're fine.
So their work is high quality?
It's acceptable.
It's quality. We haven't, we haven't had problems.
Correct. Peter Landy did Fourth Street, ELQ did another road here, and I can't remember which one. Maybe Westchester Avenue. But they've worked here as well, and they've worked with us in other municipalities, and we usually don't have any issues with them. So, Inter County would be, and Inter County would be the next bidder. So we haven't worked with them in the past, but from what I'm told, their, their work is satisfactory as well, so.
So you have recommendations in, in relation to Inter County that give them good reviews?
Yes, that's what I've been told by a few people, so.
Okay.
But I'm gonna follow up on that and get those people in writing and their names to make sure they're...
Yep.
They're 100%.
Yep.
So the board will have to make a decision, and we'll be voting on that next Tuesday
Yes.
of who gets awarded the contract. And Marcus, where was, I, I forgot, where was what we had budgeted?
$640,000.
So if we pick, say it's $400,000, so we still have a few hundred thousand dollars more of that if the board wanted to spend to do on more roads.
Yeah. And the other thing we talked about at the last meeting was doing a little bit more at Fat Sal's parking lot. Dan brought it up. Let's raise it to a higher quality. We took a look at that. We looked at the pitches. It seems like the back half of that doesn't meet the, it's like 10%, it just starts diving off real quick. So to bring that up, put a little block wall there and build that up, roughly two feet is what it needs to come up. Took a look at that, and that would be one place to put a little bit of money.
Have an idea how much that would be?
No, you could spend $50,000 on that.
George, can you go a little bit closer towards the Shell Station?
Um, we did look at that, and the board, the, the, the side, if you're looking at the parking lot to the left, we're pretty close. There's another couple feet, yes, towards the Shell Station. We did, we did look at that. We had like a 90, we had like 96 feet, and the parking lot really wants to be like 102. It wants to be like another six feet wider for better circulation. And I don't want to meet with Anthony to go over that, because I I do, he, he said at the last meeting, "I'd like to go over that with you," and I wanted to see what the numbers come in at before we have to talk about money about to do something. So it seems like we have money to do something.
Do you have that survey on that lot, or?
No, that's the other thing. I don't want to have a survey. The mayor mentioned that at the last meeting. We went off a county topo, and I think we can put something together if we meet and go out there and say, "This is where," tape it out, say, you know, "This seems like this works."
Well, I'm all for, you know, rejuvenating that lot if we have extra money there and the contractor is willing to, you know, hold this and then do some, give us some, you know,
So I spoke to him.
Change order for, for that, or however you would work that.
Right, so it'd be a change order for that.
So we could maybe get rid of the big boulders there?
You should put something in its place. Get rid, if you get rid of the boulders, maybe a wood guide rail or something like that. Metal, I mean, is...
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, then, you got a lot of options.
The budget that way.
For, for $100,000, you got $150,000 to work with. You can do a lot.
We have a contingency, though.
A little contingency. We gotta leave a little bit.
I'm just looking to improve it, especially the pitch. I don't know how everybody else feels, but...
We could raise it with the millings from the other streets.
You could do that.
And then they...
Yeah.
Yeah, Phil.
There you go. So you can make use of the millings.
So how close is the, the water behind our parking lot? Well, you know, the wetland.
It's a wetland river, yeah. It's about, I was out there the, before the last meeting, and in one spot, it's like five feet away. So you, you can go, you know, to either side, but going backwards is not gonna work, so, not at all. We're gonna be...
It's kind of tight through there.
Very much so.
Right. So that's one of the, we have, I forgot how many parking lots. We have one where Johnny Ritz used to be. We have the Highway Department. That's another parking lot that's, we're gonna need to look at, too, because that's starting to show its age.
Yeah, I think, as you say that, I think I would, I would rather direct our efforts towards the Village Garage than the lot at Johnny Ritz. I don't think it gets all that much use. Am I right?
Well, the Johnny Ritz one no more, you know.
I think that one's in good shape anyway.
Yeah, it's not in Dutch. You're right.
So we have options, is basically...
Yes.
I know that the parking garage right across from the, the houses across the street, the curb there, the road's all torn up. They're really bad. So we have to do something there, right across from the garage on the First Street.
Yes, yes. So we had some, there is some patching in the bid to take care of that.
Right.
So we can take out, there's a trench that goes across there. There's that spot in front of the curbs, which is really bad. So we covered that, but we didn't do anything made, you know, anything other than that, other than take out those bad spots, so.
Right.
But we really do have to address the one across from Fat Sal's. It is our parking lot. It's in bad shape and...
It's the pitch more than anything, I think, right, George?
Yeah, you're, you're on it. So that's, that's the most liable thing. So if it doesn't meet your own standards for pitch, that's the problem, so.
And Marcus said, we do have, there is other money available
Correct.
that we want to look at.
Doing other stuff, yeah.
Highway.
You can take some other fund balance if you want to do all those things. But just to make sure, we haven't talked about the crash ceiling. We got, we gotta get the price on that as well. We, as overall project. So we keep that number.
So that number was about, that number came out really good. That person that was off a state bid was like $25,000.
So I'm just saying, we gotta add that.
After subtracted from the 640.
Correct.
So we're now down to 615, so.
So if we have, if we have a little extra money, too, I think maybe we should maybe look at White Street, and maybe the Circle had that whole area done alone with the parking lot and everything, if we can squeeze something else out of it. The Circle's got some issues.
The last time that was done...
White Street's got issues with the curbs, right?
I had my, I had my deli. I sold my deli in 1994. That last time the Circle was done, Bardacacella, and that was, I think we had gotten some money.
CBDG.
Yeah, we had gotten some money for the Circle. So 90, what's that, like 30 years now?
30 years ago, yeah.
So, I mean, that's something to plan for, you know?
It seems like there's some pretty good cracks going across those seams they made when they did the Circle themselves.
Yeah. Over time, we did the roads up to them, and we, then we have a seam right there, and
Right.
And that's, the Circle's left to be done, so that could be another place to put...
I think that would be a, a complete project, though.
Yeah.
Where you would have to take a, you'd have to bid out a project there, because the Circle needs to be, sooner or later, you're gonna have to curb, blacktop, you know, stamped, I'd like to stamp concrete. The papers are uneven over there as well, so. I mean, I think that would be a complete project, rejuvenate that in a whole one shot instead of patching it.
Okay.
So it's something to plan for.
Just to basically do, not just patch it up, just if we have the money, if not now, maybe next year, at least have something to look at, move to do. Because I know that the curbs over in front of the hairstylist, excuse me, the barber, his, his car, the curbs are falling apart.
Okay.
So something to look at there, too.
And so I guess what we're saying is, just to reiterate, we, we put a lot at $640,000 in the budget, and depending on who we go with, there could be money in there to take on other stuff.
Or save it for next year. And do, you know, incorporate it into next year's budget and make, make an impact on the Circle. You know?
All right.
But I do like to do the Fat Sal's parking lot. I think that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's way overdue and, you know.
And just want to repeat for Anthony and for the Board is, we got money in other fund balance, so if the board wants to get more projects done, it takes some of that money from fund balance. You know, it's, it's your village. You want to improve certain areas. I wouldn't wait. I will go ahead and do it. You got, you got a million dollars that you can do other projects with. So get, 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 get your thinking hats together, what you want to do for the community.
The other thing, I, I think I had mentioned it last time, to paint the, the middle lines in the road. Some of them are, like on Tate Avenue, Westchester Avenue, they, they need to... And the last time we did that, oh gosh, when we did the road on Tate Avenue, how many years ago was that?
It's a long time.
But, so when we did that, I know the company came in at night, because there's less traffic.
Just to stripe it, you mean?
Yeah, just striping, yeah.
Usually when the town came and did their, did their striping, it came to the village, too.
So striping is in the bid.
Really?
We, we would know when they were doing it.
Oh, on roads? Oh, no, 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 it's not.
That would be a change order.
That'd be a change.
Well, we had a separate company that, that did the lines, and now Wheels is saying...
Back in the past, when the town did their striping, they used to contact us, and we used to, they used to be in the area, and they would pick up us.
Yes. That was the savings to work together with them. And then you also have, at the end of the agenda, you have the King's Ferry Crosswalk to put money into if you, you're half of that, or how, whatever, whatever there's gonna be number going into that, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We're gonna, that's what we're gonna have a discussion about. I'm glad you're still here, so we can have that. So, okay, so we're done with talking about the roadway improvement?
So, uh, just to circle back, the, we'll come back with some costs for the, the wall at, at Fat Sal's parking lot to raise it up, to do some other improvements there. And is there another place that we're looking at?
I'd like to look at that before we come back, George, because I think it's important that we walk it.
I think so.
You know, max out the, the, our square footage over there, you know? And, and, and try and envision how many spots we want.
Absolutely. So I'm available tomorrow, Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
I think Friday may be a good day for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good for me, too.
I'll, I'll call you.
The gate valve replacement project?
Okay, we did put it out to bid, gate valve replacements for specific valves, which are can be not programmed, but planned. So you have gate valves that you can plan to do, that you say, "Oh, this one's leaking. It's not an emergency. I can repair it." Then you have gate valves that are broken, and something's going wrong, and someone has to come out and do something right away. So there's, we put it out to bid. We had one bidder, John Pozzello. So, and he gave, he's, he's local, so, and when we ask him, "Why are you the only one doing this?" Because nobody wants to come out in the middle of the night to do a gate valve for 617. Who wants to do that? Nobody. So it's hard to find people to do it, so. And he's on call. We call him. He does it. Now we have a, a contract. We can call him anytime, and we have a fixed price, and then he's gonna give us that fixed price, so. It's the first year we're doing this. We have a piggyback, not a piggyback, a carryover clause, where if we like the number and we want to do it for another year, we can up it for another year. Similar to what we do with the sledge contract, or if we like the numbers for a year and want to do it again without going out to bid, we can keep the numbers. If he agrees to it, too.
Okay.
And we typically have a lot of issues with the valves, correct?
So over the years, let's say, over the last 10 years, not so much. In the last three years, yes, we've and they all go at the same time, right? So one goes, the next one goes, the next one goes, so it's been more reoccurring over the last couple of years, last three years than before, so.
And all those gate valves you're, in the bid are, are in the prepaid area, correct?
Yeah, they, we have three of them in the prepaid area.
Yeah.
And then we have the emergency ones, so. There's one right by the the gas station. There's one at, one end of the... the gas station. There's one at one end of the gas station and there's one right by the Circle. Those are both twelve inch valves.
And he does the 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 restoration complete?
Everything.
Okay, so he, it's complete restoration.
Complete restoration. But in this case, um, he'll be putting it back with like six inches of binder. You build off the top two and then you put the top on top of that so that you don't have to, so you get a clean look.
Yeah.
So. So I think he's, him being the only bidder and prices seem to be reasonable. Seems pretty clear that he probably didn't want to go with.
Good. So let's, I'm gonna skip a few things while George is here. Um, we've been talking about crosswalks on uh, Bannam and Kings Ferry and Tate Avenue and Kings Ferry. And then the town wanted to split the price um, to do it, but it's a pretty steep price and the sidewalk is the town's and you know, the board has to make a decision now.
Yeah, so um, we were talking um about this, I think at a prior meeting, that the village at the end of Bannon, the left side is the town, on the right side is the village, and then as you um, go down Tate, both sides are the village. So three quarters of it belonged to the village, but the the caveat here is that back twenty years ago, the town took a project on on their own. And they got some CBDG grant money and they put it in and I don't think we even took care of the sidewalks, right, Bob?
No.
We never took care of it. We never maintained it. We never put it in. So here we are. It's on our right away, thirty three quarters of it, but how much of that should we really be putting in towards? I guess that's the, that's the question here. So what's what's fair? You know, what's fair to?
Well, you know the price for eighty eight ramp.
Yep.
For a single eighty eight ramp, just say one single eighty eight ramp. I mean, you've you've seen bids before with one single eighty eight ramp.
Yep.
But the problem with those is that the way we've drawn them up.
Right.
The the it it it's actually extends the curb line.
Correct.
And that, that's where the pricing, that's where the price, you know, escalation came come in because I mean, that drawing brings it all into the village.
Correct.
And there's a crosswalk involved. There's tiles involved, you know. But I mean, I like the drawing. Um, and what was the price?
Sixty to eighty thousand dollars.
No, they they gave a price of between eighty and a hundred. We, based on our our um, you know, like these bids that we put out from twenty twenty three was between sixty and eighty. So ours is between sixty and eighty. Theirs is between eighty and a hundred if they go out to bid again. So they're.
They haven't gone to bid yet. This is their engineer's estimate.
I mean, I'm I'm, it's a high price. It is a high price and you're looking at, I mean, I've I'm I'm not gonna put numbers out there, but the the they, you know, you know what the numbers are.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, and it's it's two ramps, if talking total of four ramps. And I mean, I'm sixty to eighty sounds reasonable to me. It's still high. Eighty to a hundred is very high.
Uh, yeah, based on.
Even with the, even with the added curb line.
Yeah, so based on the the numbers we got from this bid, I mean, we're seeing a trend that's, there are contractors out there looking for work. So I mean, maybe they're just trying to prepare us for a high number, just in case it comes in, but and maybe you tell them, okay, we're good at eighties. Uh, you know, if it comes in at eighty thousand, we will consider the bids then. I mean, I think you need to like we said, we put on notice, so we should be doing something. Um, and we're shrinking it from seventy five feet down to forty five feet, I believe. That's considerable amount. So the amount of time someone spends in the crosswalk is almost cut in half. So it's it definitely be safer.
It's a good drawing. I I like it. I like the way that you designed it. Um, and I know that the town is on a time limit too, over there. They're paving that road. They're paving Kings Ferry. I mean, I saw the market, so it's it's set up to mill and pave. I would imagine it's on the schedule soon.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
They keep falling, they keep falling.
Yeah, so it must be on the schedule soon. So they want an answer right away.
Correct.
So that's.
And I I, like I said at the last meeting and the last time we spoke about this, I don't understand why they wouldn't want to do a pre-pave anyway, on their own dime. It's their sidewalk.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, I just don't, I don't get it. I mean, you know the standards that they'd be complying in New York State now with the ADA compliance.
It's expensive.
It's almost mandatory.
Yes, that's right.
That's right.
Every, if you want to get CHIPS money, and we're a bit fortunate, right, Cindy, that they haven't come back and said, you know, where's your, give me pictures. They've get, in other communities, they give us pictures of your ADA ramps to make point. So actually, in the Circle, in this project, we have uh, the ramp along Tate that goes from the um, the deli there to the to the Monroe Park. That one's got to be redone. So the contractor's got to redo that one. That's, that's in this bid. That that's kind of what scares me about the little bidder. I don't think he he fully grasps everything here. So but.
Yeah, and and I noticed that he, you know, that's true about that. He picked up on that because I, he does a lot of curb. Doesn't do a bad job on the curb, but the ramps, I don't, I I'm not familiar with him doing ramps like that either.
Yeah, so.
And and a lot of the company, a lot of, we talk, I asked Marcus about CHIPS money because we, you know, a lot of the municipalities I work for, they use that for their ramps.
They do.
And that's how they pay for the ramps. And um, we don't want to get in trouble. So.
Yeah, but George, if they come to us about CHIPS, the CHIPS people come to us, we, there was a lot of work that was done on Albany Post Road. And that was all redone with the new ramps for the ADA.
Yes.
So I would take pictures of that and say, well, yes, these were the new improvements that were done in the village. That's all, you know?
Just just to reiterate, George, so where where we're talking about, that was never done by us. It was done by the county, you're saying?
Uh, it was done as a CDBG project, so grant. So the county, usually what they do is they put in their their design services and the municipality um uh, puts in either a portion of the money or something, because it's not a hundred percent. It's usually like seventy five percent or something like that. So somebody else put in the money to match the county match. So and back then, I would, I want to say it was like fifty percent. Wasn't even seventy five, it was probably fifty. So um, and it wasn't the village that I know. We, I I've never so never worked on that sidewalk. So in my opinion, it doesn't fall on us.
Technically, their sidewalk. And they they did that back uh, when the the library was built. So that they could connect the school to the library.
So.
And they maintain it too.
Yeah, and technically it's non-compliant.
That too.
So I would, that's why I don't understand why they want to upgrade when before they pre-paved. Or they just want us to pick up our, pick up the dime.
Uh, no, thank you.
I think it's, I I don't really want to talk about this again.
I think my one question really is, is technically it's their sidewalk, but technically who's liable if something happens on our portion of it? That that's the big question.
That's that's a good.
Maybe.
Twenty years ago, did anybody ask that question when they put it in?
They wanted a sidewalk for the library.
Stephanie, I don't know if you heard, um, the question is, if the sidewalks, the sidewalks on village property, but it was put in by the town, do you have any idea who would be liable in case something happens?
Well, I would, I would suggest that that depends on how they got injured. Were they supposed to be?
Yep.
Was it a snowstorm? Was there something we did and incorrectly? I mean, I would think that's on us and we would have to maintain it. I mean, unless you could say, unless you could say it was done incorrectly or negligently installed and they knew about it. But, you know, I think it primarily would fall on us.
Well, here here's my view as an insurance guy, because I see this stuff all day long. New York State's comparable negligence anyway. So either way, both parties are probably going to be named and are probably going to be paid out and are probably, exactly.
We hope that never happens.
Roll the dice.
All right, so let's, we've got to get back to the town.
Yes.
Um, who's going to do it? Because we can say eighty to a hundred, it's kind of sounding kind of steep. You know, you got to come in with a real number. So that the board can make a decision. I mean, what if it comes in at fifty thousand? You know, like, they've got to come in with a real number.
Well, the question I want to ask the board is, are the, is the town willing to go to bid, get the results, and then you make a decision then? And you can reject the bids or, I don't understand why they're forcing the issue. I personally, I'm saying why they're forcing the issue now without going to bid. They're drawing numbers out there without having the bid numbers. Uh, so.
You're going up comparables and.
Yeah.
That's all.
Mm-hmm.
But but they're forcing issues because they want to pave the road.
Yeah, they they want to, yes.
Want to dug up after.
So the question is, do you want to be able to reject the bids? Or you gotta give them a commitment, one way or the other?
Well, if they're happy with their sidewalk, I think we should be happy with the sidewalk. I'm good with the way it is.
Yeah.
Obviously, they they're not accepting the liability. They maintain it. They're okay with the way it is. I'm okay with it too.
So am I.
The integrity of the sidewalk is not a question. It's just the crosswalk.
Correct.
And we wouldn't even be able to paint the sidewalk at all either. But then again, we we had this discussion years ago about Fat Sal's because we were concerned about the cars coming into the village and people crossing, you know, to go over to Fat Sal's. But even at that point, even if you have a crosswalk, that doesn't mean like, people need to understand, that doesn't mean you're safe because you're in the crosswalk.
Correct.
So just be careful out there. That doesn't mean people are going to stop.
Nope. Look what happened to Marinerick last week.
Oh, God, yes. Oh.
So can we not talk about the sidewalk?
Please, yes. So let's, let's tell them to go out to bid and then the board will uh, what do you think?
Well, is the bid gonna change our mind?
Well, my understanding is that it looks like I heard that we don't, we don't want to pay.
I don't even care what their bid number from the back.
I heard that that is your side, is your curb, you put it in. If you're happy with it, then I say there's no reason to spend.
And they plow too. In the winter time, they they have a machine that house.
I think we're kind of all in agreement on this.
If I may, um, you might want to, in that response back, say, you you know, you don't agree with paying, but you agree that something should be done. So that you're kind of.
Well, let me ask you this, George. If if they're getting ready to pave the road, okay, wouldn't they have to comply and make it compliant?
They should be. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to say. And and I've been saying it. It's like, why wouldn't they want to make it compliant when they had the ability to do so? Because if they paved the road and then they want to put the ramps in later, they gotta, they gotta.
Dig it all up.
Yeah, I mean, get a saw cut and, you know, remove the curb and do it again. It just doesn't make sense. Let them do it.
It's a no. Yeah, it's a no for us. We have to, you know, okay, right? Are we all in agreement with that, I think?
That settles that. Yep.
Okay.
George, I just have one other question because I'm noticing different things going on uh, as I do my drive around the village. When you get to the end of Lakely Avenue across from Holtek, there is one of those tiles, one of those um, you know, handicap ramps that's been just like sitting there. Like, it's it's not done.
Yeah, that's that's Westchester Hills and that one, they were doing restoration yesterday and today, and they should have been doing that one today. And I just drove by that one today and it wasn't done. So we had a meeting with
Frank.
Frank on Monday. And we brought that to his attention.
Oh, why don't you tell the board a little update on that for the conversation?
There we go. It's another good story.
So Frank uh, is the owner of Westchester Hills. We had a meeting with him on Monday. Because we were having, we told him we were having this meeting with the board today and we want to give the board an update on the the status and the progress. And we asked him point blank, you know, can you finish this project in a timely fashion? And he said, well, why couldn't I? So, well, you couldn't because your past history here on this road is not um, been too good. So he said, no, I can finish. And that's when he told us he's gonna finish, actually, he was supposed to finish uh, this week, but he has a contract with Westchester County on call services. So today and tomorrow, he has to answer that call. And he said he should be done by tomorrow. And then he comes back, but he's gonna have, he had a crew here. I think they were doing touch up um, the restoration.
We tried to give him a motion, saying, listen, if you're overwhelmed and you can't finish this, we'll pay you for what you've done and we'll give it to somebody else. And he was very adamant, I'm gonna get it done. I've been here every day. I say, hey, I've been every day. You've been dumping garbage in people's lawns. They dumped a ton of screws on the street that people are getting flats. Uh, your workmanship, they put curbs in without thank God I wanted to resident, they put curves on without any rebar. They had to tear that back out and put it back in. It's been, and it's been been delayed. He said, nope, I'm committed. I'm gonna get this thing done. Um.
That curve has been formed up there since last week. It's, the forms are set.
That's correct.
Yep.
And he was supposed to pour.
Well, then he complained about the concrete, the delivery of the, of the cement.
Yeah, so he was having problems with uh, so Dakota or wherever he's using. Would say, oh, I'll be there at two o'clock and they wouldn't show up till like three thirty or four. He said, well.
He's in a tough spot. He's in a real tough spot with me on this board, I'll tell you right now.
He said if.
There's no way that happens.
That's, that's what I heard.
I order concrete every other day.
So that's what he. This is story with story we heard.
He's in a tough spot with that. So.
That's, that's a shame because last year he did Bannon and.
He did a great job. It's almost like a different company.
Totally different.
And uh, he lost one of his, probably, I think, one of his best workers and um, it was not.
You're absolutely correct. One hundred percent. He lost his, probably his best worker. And that is is very relevant to what's going on right now.
I think so. How did, how did we find out he didn't rebar in the curbing? Oh, somebody, so our inspector got there at nine and Marcus called me up and said, hey, one of the, one of the uh, uh, one of the residents, one of the people said, hey, there's something missing in there. And we told them the day before. He said, no, I'll bring it the next morning. Not a problem, not a problem. Inspector gets down, he goes, we deported all by the time we got there. He goes, okay, is it in there? He said, yeah, it's in there. Goes, you don't mind if I dig some of it up and check, right? Goes, no, no problem. They get nothing there. You know, okay, take out the rest of it. So that's how we found out.
You know, I I just want to ask you something else too. We, we have a process or bond. So when utilities come in or contractors come in for our roads and they dig them up and what, remind me again what that process is because I'm looking at Second Street. There's, there's an opening there that's been there for quite some time.
Second, when was Second Street?
That's Con Ed. So so what, remind me again, because who who stays on top of that? Who makes, like, releases the bond when it's, it's, you know, when it's supposed to be released? Who checks it before the bond is released?
So road opening uh, permits are going through the Highway Department. And they get a permit, they open it up, they do the work.
Correct.
And they're supposed to come back and tell us when they're done. And then when they tell us they're done, we take the the village, so takes a look. We don't take a look. Someone from the Highway Department goes out.
Yeah, so something like that, we have to tell Scott, he'll call Con Ed and they'll come back and patch it up.
So he witnesses the, he witnesses the restoration?
Yes, yes. And it's done, but as you know, they start sinking over time. You gotta come back and.
Cause he didn't witness the restoration.
Well, he he witnesses the the asphalt going back. He doesn't witness the 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 material going in the hole, the backfill, it's the backfill.
Well, if it's a leak or something like that, I get it. Um, but there are companies that come in and do the the follow-up restoration for that. Uh, they all do it.
Right.
Um, and that's the second time around. So if there's an emergency leak, kind of comes fix it, they backfill the hole or they plate it.
Right.
They throw a little coal patch on or something, whatever it is. And then the a company will come in and do a restoration, which he needs to be there for the witness.
Right.
Uh, the backfill needs to be a part of that. Um, that's where you get your your sinking.
Yep.
You know, I mean, the the, we should have somewhere in our specs where we would consider using K-Crete.
We we've, we've reached out to them about K-Crete. They said that on their gas mains, you can't put it directly on there.
Absolutely not.
Mm-hmm. And um, they said you need to be like six inches above it or whatever.
One foot item four and then the rest should be K-Crete to sub base.
And um, that's actually how it should be restored. And but we're not watching it. So.
No, I know. That's, that's, you know, Theresa brings up a good point. And I always, I always wondered like how, you know, I I I you know, other municipalities, I, we we are way behind in the times. And I've been meaning to speak to you about this. I mean, their restoration is curb to curb. You know, we're we're settling for for half roads and this and that. And and you know, when when they're doing, when they're doing a main or coming in with a line or anything like that, that is, impacts our road, we we should we should get them from curb to curb.
I know we have a, and.
Yeah, we do. We we have um, Yeah, we do. We, we have, um, certain patches or it depends on the length, the size. Um, half the road, full road, you know, depending on what it is. I mean, we have a detail for every condition. So if they're putting in, let's say, fifty feet of pipe, that's a curb to curb, full restoration of the road. If they're doing a one little gas service, that's either fifty percent of center line or a full curb.
No, I get that, I get that.
So that, so, um, there is something for every condition in there. Uh, the highway department needs to get familiarized with all those details.
One of the problems in the past too, there's, I've gone to Marcus numerous times when they've done jobs like this. And I said, Marcus, this isn't a good job. They gotta get back out here and fix it. And you might as well talk to the wall sometimes.
And, and that's the other part of the problem is the communication with Con Ed. Con Ed will say, okay, I'll be out there, let's say, in three days. And you don't know it. And then they start working up the, the day before. And they come back and they patch it and you go. Oh, well, I didn't know you guys were gonna be here that day. Or they come a day after or something, something comes up. And they don't do it on the day that they say they're gonna do it. So you try to plan for it and you can't even plan for it because you don't know when they're doing it.
Or they don't show up again.
Or they don't show up.
So how do we hold them accountable?
I think going to your liaison.
Government Relations Liaison that we go to, that's a problem. If we can't get the restoration done by a company, then I reach out to them and nobody there respond after that.
Yeah, but six months later, it settles, a year later, and then it's all messed up. Why is the village of Buchanan being responsible to repair that?
No, any Con Ed is in line, they gotta come back and fix it.
There's, there, and then, then we, we've had private contractors. Now, do they have a bond? Like when they open the road and then they, they fix it and then, because I've seen it on Tate Avenue too.
So they fall under the Con Ed bond. So the Con Ed takes out one bond and it covers whoever they.
But if somebody does a water line, if somebody does, a plumber does a water line. You know, I'm just saying, like, in the future for the village, why are we ended up patching these things like one and a half, two years later? When it goes back to whoever the contractor was, like, so we keep, who keeps track of this? Who's done this? Like, who's responsible to repair it? Instead of our road sinking and then we're coming in to do a patch.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the road opening.
So, the highway department should have a record of all of this. There should be data on every road opening permit. And data of the restoration, date, the dates when it was open, when it was closed, who witnessed the restoration. If there's any problem. Because there is gonna be a inspector from Con Edison there.
Right.
On site to witness the restoration. And someone from our office should be there with him to agree on what is being done. And we don't do that.
So what some other municipalities do is they have a, um, they have a form. So you gotta check in with the municipality when you do certain phases of everything. Did you, and you gotta check off the box is to get your money back. So this might be part of upgrading your form, your road opening. Yeah, where's our form? We need a form. So we, we have, we probably have to upgrade our form to say, okay, when you come back, you gotta notify us twenty-four hours in advance. And when you come back to do the final pavement, we gotta give twenty-four hours notice and so on. So that you have these checkpoints. That you can know what's going on.
But one of our guys at the shop has to familiarize himself with that.
Yes.
And it has to be done with protocol.
Yes, yes, correct.
So, but I'm gonna throw.
Second Street, you told Scott about that one?
But there's an example in front of the group home on Henry Street. And we, they did work. Um, it's on between third and second, the group home. And they did some type of plumbing or some kind of work, but we patched that. They, they did the work and it was like, um, maybe a year, two years later. It was sinking, the patch was in bad shape. So I just want to know going forward for the village, we shouldn't be paying for these patches. Even if it's two years later, it wasn't, we're not destroying the road. It's whoever the contractor was at the time. So that's why I was asking, do we have a bond that we hold on to long enough? So that if there is that issue, then they come back and they fix it. It was a big patch. Well, I'm not saying little. It was, it was a huge patch right in front of the house.
And this was, uh, uh, Con Ed?
No, no. They had done some kind, time of, uh, drainage work or something with the house. They put in a different thing and then. So there was a huge square. But I, I'm just trying to think ahead for the future that it's, we're protecting our roads. We're investing in the roads and we wanna maintain them and we don't want these contractors coming in. And then we have to do a big old patch two years later. That's not fair to the village.
Absolutely not. Uh, and some of that, it might even be part of Peters', um, when they do a house, do a house, work on a house. So that might fall under the building permit and the building permit forces you to open, uh, take out a road opening permit. So one triggers the other. So part of that is, again, people coordinating with the villages. You gotta improve your, the forms maybe to try to get that more, um.
Yeah, we really need to stay on topic that.
Absolutely. And we get a, we get required cash bond, which you guys might have to approve.
Yeah, this, this really isn't George's. This should be announced.
Yeah, it should be a cash, we've done cash bonds for this. The bond is pennies on the dollar.
We, we spend a lot of money on road work. We want to keep our roads nice and we shouldn't be fixing something that somebody else did.
Yep, okay.
Okay, um, anything else for George?
Yeah, you want to talk about the curb cut? Uh, we had a resident, and George St. gave you a picture of this individual, he sees on Gallagher. And some, somebody saw cut the curb, uh, and he wants the village to put a curb cut along the front of this property. I told, I told him, I, he came back to the village, I said, I don't understand why you need a curb cut in front of your property. He said, well, I want to park on the grass. I said, wait, you come down the driveway and then make a right-hand turn and park on your grass. I don't want to do that. Um, he mentioned another, another person that got something similar. And I told him that's nothing you can do. He said he was gonna come tonight. He's not here. But he told me that please express this request to the village board and I had George do some research. Uh, George can give me an update as well.
So, so, uh, gave you the before and after picture of this curb cut. That we're talking about. Uh, the first page is how it was and appears that, uh, this curb was. Um, saw cut after it was installed. I don't know when it was saw cut, but it was saw cut at an angle. And we're assuming that's to mount, like this resident is saying, to mount the, uh, mount onto the sidewalk, onto the, uh, grassed area. Um, the second picture is what got put back. You can see the two orange cones is actually the further away. Uh, past the, the second orange cone, it's a full height curb. We put it back to a normal standard. And, uh, as we, we didn't think that this was legally done. Because this is not something you, we would construct. This is something that a homeowner did and I don't think. There's anything in the building department file that says that, you know, this was permitted. So since there's nothing in the file. Since it wasn't formally permitted, um, we put back a regular curb. So if you want, we can. We can take out that curb and put in a drop curb and go further down, or we can leave it the way it is. So that's, that's where we're at.
And to continue his statement, he said that it really doesn't matter to him, but, uh, he said, his daughter told him he should get it done. So that when he sells the property, it'll be worth more money by having a curb cut to allow the new homeowners to park in the front lawn. So that's the whole story I heard today. So I want to pass that.
But isn't parking on the lawn legal in the village?
Yeah.
How, how does that make the, the value of the real estate any more valuable?
He said, because that way if that per, that family had more cars, their children and other people can park on the lawn.
Oh my gosh. But they can park on the street, yeah.
Yes, they can park.
That argument makes no sense.
So I'm passing along, he, he's, he's not here tonight. He's not on Zoom. Uh, but in case he sees you on the street. At the individual, you know the story. And I agree with George. I think he was cut, I told him myself, I, somebody saw cut it. It wasn't a village. And he said, it doesn't matter who saw cut it. I, I would like to have it back. I said, well, I have to talk to the board about it tonight. So that's what we're doing tonight.
All right, I need clarification because some, some of the language is new to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking at the before. This is how his curb was.
Yes.
And now it has a reactor.
Correct.
Who put in the curb here?
Uh, uh, contractor, our contractor put the new curb in.
The new curb in. And he's upset about that curb?
You, you can't drive.
Go back to that?
That's a professional talk, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, here, this is six inch reveal.
Okay.
This is where he, this is the area that he's speaking.
Oh, not this.
Right, this is, this is back here, yeah.
Correct.
This is the drop here for the two driveways. This has got a reveal here. This is where the drop is here, but he wants the, the drop to.
I have another question too. Marcus, I have another question too. Why was this not proposed to us prior?
Correct.
To the, to the, to the curves being poured. I mean, they've been up there since April. Yeah, so he walked up to the inspector after it was poured and said, I want what my neighbor has. Cause he got, his neighbor got, um. He's the guy, that's why you see the full length of this. So the neighbor.
And I, and, and just to let you know, I, I told him, the, the village decision was anybody had a curb cut before. Would be, would be put back in. We're not gonna add additional curb cuts. So I say, you didn't have a legal curb cut, so therefore we're not giving it to you. He still wasn't happy about the answer either.
I know. Was there communication prior to the four?
No.
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 Well, that poor, the, the, the new curb that was put there about a month ago, was it?
Correct. Yeah, cause that side got done first, correct?
And, and it doesn't affect him, like, I'll make it very.
Yeah, installing.
Yeah, he said that it doesn't affect him. It affects a future homeowner.
But to put it back the way it was, would require for us to agree that he can park on the curb even though it's not allowed?
On the lawn.
I mean, on the lawn, even though it's not allowed?
He said he does it. He does, he said he does it now.
But it's not allowed. All right.
Yeah. I mean, we, we passed a new law this year. You can park in the street all year round.
Yeah.
And we changed, and I told him, we changed the snow requirement, so allow you to park in the street longer as well.
And during a snow emergency, they can park in the grass.
Yeah, I, I said that as well, yes.
So he can, he could enter, uh, from the driveway, onto that spot.
Correct.
He said, I don't want to do that.
Correct.
I think it's safer anyway.
If he enters, yeah.
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. I, I just, I don't. I, me personally, I wouldn't want the curb cut there. That was my house. I would want.
I wouldn't either.
Yep.
Me too.
I mean, the grass is growing over the old curb.
That's right.
Think it looks neater.
It looks nicer.
I agree.
I think it looks nicer, yes. So I told him, I expressed to the board unless they want to change anything. It's poured, it's, we can continue moving forward. So hopefully, that's, that's.
I just want to know if there was, like, George answered, if there was communication before the pour. So there was none?
No, it was, I want what my neighbor has.
After the pour?
After the pour.
Oh, all right. Well, then, you know, I.
Did he know there was going to be a pour?
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's.
Yeah, they were coming up. So they started in April, they started on that side of the street down by Lindsay. They started working their way up. And then they got past his driveway, they got to the next driveway. And then he saw what they had. He said, I want what they have. Well, that is already done, so.
And he's selling his home.
And he's selling his home.
Okay.
And he said, I don't care what you do, but my, as Marcus said, my daughter wants me to sell the house and it's more valuable with the space there.
Right. So I think I have my answer. Thank you. That's, that's the only other thing I want to have George stay here at first. If there was a change in direction, George will have to know.
All right.
Okay, I don't think we have any other questions for George. Thank you, George.
Oh, yeah, this, I have to put this on the record.
I, I, yeah, I sent out the stormwater management, uh, program plan. Um, this was done, and you see the date on the front, two thousand and four. Um, the D E C updated the permit. They'd updated it to some hundred and. Sixty, I think it's sixty-eight pages. Hundred and sixty-two, hundred and sixty-two page permit. And in this permit, they want you to update your plan. And they want you to do more. They want you to, so what we've been doing in the past is we've been keeping track of our outfalls. We've been. We have a map. We have a map of the village. But now they want to put the map on, uh, make it available to the public. So now that has to be digitized and we digitized it, we put it, we got it. We're working with the county. We've worked in the county in the past with their, uh, G I S system. So the county's been very helpful. And we put, we have our zoning map on there. We have our water mains. We have some other stuff on there. Um, so they have that. Now we're putting our stormwater map on there. And, uh. Then there comes along with that, a whole host of administrative, um, items that they want you to do. They want you to do monitoring, record-keeping, reporting and certification. So July third comes the point where a certification is due. And part of that is the mapping. And we've done, done the mapping where we say we got, they want two-foot contours, they want to identify streams, they want to identify. T M D Ls, which are, um, Lake Miha is an impaired water body. It gets the contaminants, so to speak. We have to monitor it. And in the future, we have to test. The outfalls that go into Lake Miha for contaminants, which is coming down the road. So this is all part of a three-year program. Uh, this is the first part of it, the first phase of it, for six months. So we're gonna have an interim certification that we have to do. And we're gonna have to test for odor, color, turbidity, floatables. Um, temperature, pH and ammonia, somewhere down the line. Not, not this year. But there've, the D E C has set it up so that there's checkpoints and milestones for us to meet and do these things. Um, so we've, we've upped, the first, first thing to do is to do the N O I. We did the electronic N O I. That was back. In February, January, February. And then the second part is to do the mapping and to do this stormwater management plan. So this has to be made available to the public. We give you a draft of it, um, just so you can bruise it, go through it, um.
So the board have to approve this at the next meeting or, when, when does it get posted to the public?
So it, it should be available to the public July third.
As a draft or approved by the board?
Um, either way.
Uh, just give me what, what you want to be posted on the website, so we post it on the website.
Um, so we have to post it so that it made available to the public. And that's, that's essentially the, the nuts and the bolts of it. Um, there's a lot to do. So there, there's gonna be more administrative work for people like, uh, Marcus, the clerk, the building inspector, the highway department. Yourself. We all, we have a whole list of responsibilities in here. For instance, if a call comes in, let's say, a listed discharge where somebody's discharging something into a catch basin, which they shouldn't be doing. Before, we just called the building inspector. We told the building inspector. He went out, he checked it out. Now we have to have a form. We talked about forms earlier. Now we're gonna have more forms. We have forms to fill out. You have to track what happened to it, when it happened. What the corrective action was and do follow-up on it. So this is a lot of, a lot of administrative work for, for every time you see something go wrong. Just, that's for just seeing something, what is a discharge? And then there's the monitoring of the outfalls and all that too.
So this is the water, just so the public understands, this is the water, this is your stormwater, this is the water that goes into the catch basins. And, and, you know, on the edge of the road, those, so. I, I just have to reiterate again, that's not a garbage disposal. So I have seen people put dog poop in there. Um, I've had, seen people put cigarettes in there into the catch basins and all kinds of things. So this is why we don't do that because it goes into the lake. The lake is having some major issues. It, it does struggle at times. Um, I don't think that we're going to be a problem, a factor into the lake. Um, you also have to remember in Montrose, they have a, um, a package sewer treatment plant. So the, the lake over the last couple of years has been struggling a little bit. And that's probably one, why they want more, more monitoring.
Yeah, and this is for not just Buchanan. So, uh, it's, it's costing a lot of communities a lot of money. Um, I know. They've just mentioned another community has to take on extra personnel to just keep track of stormwater. They're, they're treating stormwater like a utility. It's like sewer, like water. And they call the person in here an operator. So they're, they're saying that, you know, this is gonna, that they're, this has always been in place, but they're, they're raising it up a level of. What they're doing. So to make you more aware of it, more accountable for it, um, more tracking, more record-keeping. So they want, and the, the premise is that you'll have cleaner, uh, stormwater. If you clean stormwater, the lakes, the streams, that. You have more fish, you have more wildlife, it's.
Other communities, okay, sort of Hudson River, so it's also the Hudson River too.
So we're, we're fortunate we're the Hudson River. Other, other communities are.
The Long Island Sound.
The Long Island Sound, some of them are in the, um, east of Hudson, which is everything that goes into the reservoirs that go to New York City water.
Right.
There, we have a certain level. They have another.
Much higher level.
Higher level of monitoring.
Around the reservoirs, yeah.
Around the reservoirs. So it, uh, it's coming. So, but we've been, we've been. So, but we've been, we've been keeping up with it, uh, year after year with our monitoring, with our outfalls and, uh.
So we'll get that on the website. Oh, George, I got, oh, I told the board that we got the approval for the.
Oh, nine, nine A, so nine A, the SAG. Um, D O H gave us the approval today, you know, we, we've addressed all their comments, all their issues. I had a conversation with the D O T. Um, they don't issue a formal, uh, permit until, uh, we get a contractor on board and that contractor. Then signs up for the permit. So, uh, but they said, we can go out to bid. The only thing that we have to do. Right now is there's a Verizon line right next to the sewer line. So Verizon put something right next to the sewer.
Good place for it.
So Verizon now has to come out, they're going to do four test bits, uh, beginning, two in the middle, one on the end. Just to locate that conduit to make sure we stay away from, our surveyor comes out, picks up the spots and we stay to the. Further outside of that and we should be good.
And that's part of our, we are grant, so.
We, we didn't apply for that.
So we have to see where that grant comes in to see if we can pay for that project.
What was, what was the estimate on that? Something is telling me like a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, say something like the three fifty, four.
How many feet is five percent?
Let's see, four hundred.
Four hundred feet?
Four or five hundred feet, but it's all, uh, off the asshole, it's all in the shoulder. So it's all in the ground, but it's, the, the one problem that it is, it's, parts of it are deep. And then there's a lot of phasing to it. So you got to keep the old sewer line in place. So you have the old sewer line, you have the, um, the Verizon line, they have to dig lethargically in between the two. Keep the old one in line, online, put the new one in, test it and then.
That requires, uh, how many manholes?
Four, uh, uh.
Four?
Well, it's four total, but the two at the ends are existing and there's three new ones, two or three new ones in the middle.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, you gotta doghouse manhole, divert it.
Yes. So.
I like that one.
Well, more fun in the village of Buchanan.
So.
That's all I have, that's all I have to say about George.
Alright, thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Alright, have a good night.
Have a good night. Happy Fourth of July.
Yeah. And if we got done sooner, you and Anthony could have went out to the parking lot, but, because it's, it's nice now.
So I'll call you, George. I think Friday may be good for me.
Friday, I'm.
If I'm good, I'll call you.
I'm clear all day.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'll go out there, we'll, and by then too, I'll, I'll have a, I'll have a sketchup of it. So that, uh, we're, we're working off the plan, the boundaries and all that too, so.
Alright. I'll make it early enough where you can buy me lunch.
Alright, have a good night.
Alright, thanks.
Take care, George.
Take care.
Okay, so Dave, thank you for waiting patiently. We had a few things to discuss. So the next is a discussion on M, the M one zoning amendment and Dave, if you could just for the public. And, and the board also give an overview of what we're looking at.
Okay. Uh, I had an opportunity to go out in the field with, uh, with Dan and with Marcus and I think there, there was the, the kind of the. The issue is there an opportunity to create, uh, some additional economic development, uh, in. A portion of the M one district and we're.
Sorry, Dave, can you bring the mic down?
A little closer?
Bring the mic down, whatever.
Okay, is that better? Very good. So the, the portion we're talking about is essentially, um, off of White Street and includes the, um. The Westchester, uh, the Wick property, uh, and that is essentially from Albany Post Road back towards, uh, the Metro North. Properties. I, I think it's approximately seventeen acres in size. And when you go back there and we have an opportunity just to, to quickly go back, there, there are properties that are, um. Not put to the highest and best use. Um, there, so the, the issue is. How does the village want to approach looking at these properties, uh, for future redevelopment? And so, uh, I put together, uh, what I think is a pretty standard approach. Looking at land, looking at existing land use, looking at photo documentation of the properties in question, so we understand. Um, what's back there. Um, there's an issues and opportunities graphic and, and part of this, um. Is to evaluate, you know, what properties, uh, make the most sense and, and. There are, um, there are Con Edison properties that are fronting that, and this is a question when we. If you want to go forward and you want to have stakeholder interviews, is to approach Con Edison and say, would you be interested in. Participating in this type of a evaluation for rezoning. I, I don't know what, how they, the future use of those properties are. But it certainly makes it more advantageous if you have, uh, the ability to. Um, almost have a gateway for this entire section. Um, for economic development, just from a visi- visibility standpoint, as you're traveling up and down the roadway. Um, the, the other component to that is, is to look at, and we discussed this in the field. Is, are there other, uh, comparable developments in the area? Small shopping centers that would have, let's say, a grocery store and other ancillary stores that support that. And you can think of some, you know, we talked about the one down the road in, uh, in Croton.
Amberlands.
Oh, Amberlands?
Yeah, and, and, and just, uh, looking from, uh, G I S. You can look at different examples and say, alright, well, how big is that, that site and compare it to what we have here. So part of that is, is looking at an evaluation of, alright, so what's realistic from a development standpoint? Um, the stakeholder, stakeholder interview, uh, interviews are important because. There may be things like, um, the Wick property where they may, they may want to do something, but it's not allowed in zoning and. You may say, you know what, that's a, that's a pretty good idea, maybe we should think about, um, that as part of a zoning approach, a zoning strategy. The other thing is, is, um, you know, Marcus and I have connections in the real estate development field. Is to put some feelers out to say, listen, there are, there's opportunities here. For the village is considering for economic development for commercial real estate type development. What makes sense? What's, you know, what do you look at, at in the, in the marketplace? We had an example of this when we were looking at, um. The property, A M S property and further down the road with Village Square, that there are certain operators that want certain locations on. Uh, major highways because there's the volume of traffic in the eyeballs that, uh, people will see that there's development. Um, uh, a, along that roadway. It's a well-traveled roadway, um, so, and as. The village begins to have somewhat of a transition or transformation where you have new development, the A M S development. That's a high-end, uh, rental property. Um, you've got Village Square, same thing, you've got more residents and we talked about this. Briefly, that a, a project like A M S, each one of those households, hundred, you know, there's, um. I forget the number, but we have to a hundred and.
One forty-eight.
One forty-eight. So, yeah, a hundred and forty-eight new households moving into the village of Buchanan. They're all going to have some amount of discretionary income that they're going to spend somewhere. Groceries, getting something to eat, barber, you know, anything, so. And you make an opportunity for them within your community, so they're not necessarily leaving. But there's an opportunity for them to, to stay here, spend their money here in the village of Buchanan. Um, so, and then the, the final product would be a technical memo to, to your board with a recommendation. I didn't want to get into, I think it, it, this helps set the framework for, alright, are you willing to entertain a rezoning? Because that's, that's a discretionary action on your part. Um, and then it also gives us a framework based on the input from the study and also your feedback as to the direction that. Any potential rezoning would take, zoning text amendment or zoning map amendment, um, that you may want to take. So it's a, it's a phased approach. It's, it says, alright, here's what's out there, here's what's possible. And if you feel comfortable with that, then you would take the next step in actually preparing the, um, the specific zoning language. And maybe perhaps a zoning text, a zoning map amendment, uh, for those properties. So that's, that's kind of a, uh, an overview of the process, the planning process that, um. I've used in the past. It's, it's, it's a fairly standard approach, uh, for communities to evaluate. Rezoning, redevelopment before they get into the actual nuts and bolts of putting together language for, um, new zoning.
So what is the actual, is the actual acreage of Wick seventeen acres?
No, I, I, I believe, uh, we looked at the total of the Wick property and then there's two properties in the back off of White Street. That holds, uh, that holds about seventeen acres.
Okay, so if you're in, going into White Street, it's going straight in?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Because wasn't that a couple of months ago, wasn't that, somebody was interested? I think a Buchanan resident was interested in opening some type of a gym or something like that, or some kind of a recreational area or.
Right.
Yeah, but there's been no application.
No application, alright.
So again, that.
But that would be a change of use anyway.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I don't even know if that's allowed. It's not allowed in the zone.
Right.
Well, as you're looking at zoning.
Yeah, the problem with the, the M one district is all, if you look at the uses, is, is all. It's all auto body shops, I mean, it's really low economic benefit to the village.
More like an industrial.
It's all industrial warehouses and.
Yeah.
Auto body shop, repair shops, which Brady, we have enough, I, we have a few of those already on Route nine A. So any, so the uses that people have talked about to the building department, it's not allowed on the zoning, so these people have not applied.
Okay.
And, you know, I think when, in speaking with David, I'm, I'm sorry, can I speak, Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, and, and speaking with David and Marcus when we visited the parcel and, and. You know, kind of walked it out and mapped it out and just, you know, shooting from the hip, so to speak, I, I, you know. We've got units coming in of a hundred and forty-eight and an additional, how many from Carbone's project possibly?
Fifty-one.
You, you know, these people are going to need amenities and so I think we need a clear vision of what we actually want back there. Right? If it's possible.
Mm-hmm.
And, and quite honestly, I, I, I'd like to form some kind of a business and economic development committee of local residents. Who have a business sense or who have, you know, a sense of, you know, development to, you know. Come and, and, and let's sit at a table and put our thoughts together and figure out a direction if, you know. If possible, as to where we want to go.
And, and if I may, Mayor, I, uh, I agree with Dan, not only with the maintenance for those people, but you got the current residents.
Current residents as well.
Peachville or Portland or someone to go shopping, wouldn't it be nice that they can come locally and then also create local jobs for the kids? That can stay locally as well. So there's a whole economic boost along the way. If, if, if we can get something like this done.
So is there any interest from the current property owners to do any of this or?
That would be the next step.
As part of the process is actually saying, hey, listen, you know what, the village is thinking about rezoning to different types of uses, more. Commercial, um, uh, retail type of, uh, development. Uh, i- is that something that, you know?
They might be, they might have some thoughts of what they'd like to do, you know, also some in, input from them.
And that's what the committee is good, because you have a smaller committee meet with the resident and it comes from the building board members and some other community members. What do we want to have the whole community, not only benefit the community, but benefit them as well, without create higher rental income for them as well.
We had something like that years ago and it just didn't, just, just so you know, it didn't, but you know, times have changed. But one of the big pushes were from one of the people on the board was a bank. So that didn't happen, you know, there wasn't, a bank didn't come in. So, but, you know, it's, it's years later, people with different ideas and different opportunities, so, you know.
I think at that point too, we were kind of focused on the circle, right? And so now, I think, you know, the, the village is. It's transforming a little bit. So we, we have to be open to ideas, we have to be open to, you know, welcoming, um. Possibilities that may be in front of us.
And you know what, I, I have to check, but I think there is grant money available, um. We couldn't, we couldn't use the grandma, grant money years ago because we weren't doing that type of a thing, um, developing and, and bringing in new businesses. But I do believe there's grant, some grant money available. Yeah, I have to remember the, the name of the grant, I'd, off the top of my head, because I just thought of it just now.
I mean, I can speak for myself, you know, I'm, I'm, I get tired of driving out to Route six or all the way down to Croton to do grocery shopping or run to a Home Depot or. You know, do, you know, my dry cleaning or what, whatever it may be, you know, but let's. I, I, I think we're headed in the right direction, at least we're exploring it and let's see where it goes.
I agree. I agree.
I agree with it too. I know that, uh, when we first talked about these other projects with A M S and the Carbone property. A lot of us in the board were thinking about just this. I think Dan came up with a really good idea here. You know, kudos to, to that, Dan. And, uh, I think it's something worth, worth looking at very strongly because of all the reasons that David said and Dana said.
Appreciate that, Bob. Trees as well.
Let's see.
Okay.
Well done, Dan.
Thank you.
You never know, until you ask.
I agree. I think, I think your development committee would really be, um, a good start to where we're headed.
So anybody out there that's willing to sit on the committee, please reach out.
We have, we have.
All three, all three is.
Potential members. Okay, so that is the M one. Are we ready for M two?
Yep. So with the, with the M two, I think we're, uh, I believe that the village is in a position now. Where if you want to, um, you can start to go, um, public and, and start the environmental review process. For the, um, the M two zoning, rezoning. Just to clarify, um. When we first started this process, we were looking at the entirety of the M two on both the east side and the west side of Broadway. And after a fair bit of discussion, um, your board decided, no, we're just going to look at the properties on the west side of. Broadway. So this does not include the Con Edison properties on the, the east side of Broadway. Uh, but there had been some concern about that. So these are just the properties to the west of, uh, Broadway. Um, the, the zoning text that, um, I provided to you is something that you've seen before. There are really no major changes, um, there were, there's, uh, excuse me, there's been some minor editorial cleanups with the numbering. Um, that Stephanie and I went over, uh, this, this past weekend, um. Which are the, the changes that have already been made, but it doesn't substantially change the, uh, the substance of the, uh, the zoning text. There was, uh, as you recall, um, some discussion about, uh, density. And as part of the, uh, the bulk regulations. Uh, we settled on, or I, I settled on a, a density that's consistent with the, the C one, C two overlay. Which is essentially, um, one, uh, dwelling unit per thirty-three hundred square feet. So it was, it was, it's not as much as the, the C one, C two, the special permit that A M S had. It's just the kind of the standard C one, C two overlay, um. That's the, and then, uh, the building height, uh, is, th- there's. Uh, in the, in the, in the language, so as the, the closer you are to the Hudson, the lower the building height. And then as you get further away, the building height is allowed to go up. So essentially, you're allowing for more of the views as you're closer to, um, to the Hudson. Uh, so we've, we've, understanding that in the past, that site had major structures on it that were multiple. I, I don't know how many stories tall, so we've, for now, we've had, um, we, we've got a. Uh, a maximum building height of ninety-five feet. It's essentially an eight, an eight-story building with, uh, support structures up above. Um, but again, that's only for a portion of the site towards the interior. We have included as part of the, uh, the package, um, a proposed zoning, uh, map amendment. We've included the, an environmental assessment form, which is required, uh, for these types of actions. That's the full environmental assessment form and we have included, uh, because of the nature of the change. Uh, that we're talking about, this also includes an update to the two thousand and five comprehensive plan, which reflects, your zoning needs to ref-. The comprehensive plan, um, with the zoning need to be essentially matched up and paired. Uh, so that, uh, and, and let me just back up real quick, there is, because we did have a fair bit of discussion. On, um, the Gibson plan. And per the direction. And per the direction of the board, we had included a uh an overlay district. To include uh just their property, so that overlay settles on their property. It allows them as a special permit use to continue their use. Um, there is a, um, just like any special permit in the village, they have to, um. There are, there are criteria that they need to um evaluate as part of the special permit. And um the, and this has been done in a couple of different communities. Uh, there were two out in Long Island. Um, I I'm drawing a blank on the, on the, it's Smithtown and Brookhaven. Where they um instituted the overlay and they allowed the development within that overlay. Uh, a time period where they had to apply for the special permit, so it wasn't something they had to do right away. And I think, and in the code, the proposed code, we've had, we have um uh that a. A special permit shall be um submitted or an application submitted within two years of the adoption of the ordinance. So with this particular use, it gives the village an opportunity to evaluate uh in more detail. Alright, so what are the potential impacts of that particular use? And essentially, you know, Marcus and I had a meeting with. The planner that they had retained, I think you had met her at the uh the site.
Oh, we did the site visit.
Yeah, and and she was very proud of the fact that that they import eight hundred million tons of material by barge. Up up the river.
Spain.
From Spain, right. Um, which which is great, but my follow up is, alright, well, how did all that material leave? It doesn't leave by the barge, it leaves on on the local road system. So it gives you an opportunity to evaluate, alright, so what's happening to our local road system? As a result of this particular operation. And then as part of the special permit, there's, you know, you have to evaluate impacts to transportation, transportation system, so. It gives the village an opportunity to say, alright, let's, what's happening? Is there uh uh? A- as part of the issuance of the special permit, do we need to have some standard here where there may be some. Recompense to the village for all of the impact on the local road system. So it puts in place a process where you can, uh, everybody can independently evaluate what the impacts are. Uh, and come up with a, what I think is a um. A plan that that protects the village and but still allows this particular use to continue to operate as they have in the past.
And Dave, I think you might want to add, one of the concerns is that if they burn down or they can't expand. I want to put it on the record that they can always rebuild.
Yes, under this, right.
So explain that aspect, that was one of the concerns.
Yeah, so if you, if, for instance, if you made this a nonconforming, preexisting, nonconforming use. And there was a a fire that destroyed the building or a certain percentage of of the building. Uh, then they they would not have an opportunity to rebuild. And so we're, I I think the direction from the board was, no, that we we didn't, that's not the direction we want to go in, we, you know, they, we want to keep them as a. Corporate citizen uh for, you know, for as long as they're in their operation. And uh so that, that's why we we took this approach with the overlay district. That allows them to continue to move forward and operate.
And expand within the forty five acres.
Right, within their, within their property, they can, you know, they can, they can apply for a. Uh, site plan approval, if they want to make improvements to their the site, as part of this this code, they will, um. They're required to apply for the special permit. Um, they don't have to wait for the the two years, they could do it whenever they want, um, up until that time. So, uh, based on the scope of work, uh, you have everything. That you need before you, if you want to move this forward. Um, is Stephanie on uh?
I am.
Very good, thanks. So in the, in the cover memo, um, I had suggested there's, because this is part of the state environmental quality review act. That's the environmental regulations that govern these types of actions. Your board is the only board that can um modify or or amend the zoning code. So technically, you are the lead agency, because no other body in New York State can amend the zoning code. For uh for the village. So sometimes, uh. Will bypass a process where you you circulate a notice of intent to act as lead agency. And I was thinking about this, I think perhaps, again, this only adds a month or so. To the process. But circulating a notice of intent to act as lead agency, even though you are going to be the lead agency anyways. Provides an opportunity for the other uh interested and involved agencies like New York State DEC. New York State Department of State, um. Uh, the town, Westchester County, an opportunity to review, kind of have a preview of what you're proposing and get you. Comments back as part of the notice of intent process. And so that, it it may give you a little bit of a heads up as to what some concerns of some of these other. Uh, agencies are before you go out with a public hearing, go on a public hearing, it may give you an opportunity to. Think about making some modifications if that makes sense. So my only recommendation here is that if you want to move forward, is is just to do the traditional notice of intent to act as lead agency. And we'll circulate that to all the interested involved agencies. There's a a thirty day timeframe where uh they're required to provide a response. And typically, um, Westchester County will 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 get a response back, uh, they're very good like that. Um, but I I I think the other stakeholder is certainly the E C and Department of State, because you're in this process with. Uh, your L W R P update, um, they're gonna take a special interest and what what is also gonna happen is you're gonna get some of the other. Stakehold, I'll call them stakeholders, scenic Hudson, uh Riverkeeper, who will. Right, oh yeah, they're good, you know, you you've you've dealt with these people, right, all the time, and you, so they're, they have a special interest in. Um, in looking at what happens along the Hudson River. So they'll they'll. We could certainly make that available to them as well as part of this process, or they'll, they're gonna be requesting it, um. And my suggestion is, you know, obviously, provide it online, full transparency.
Yep.
For what the uh, and and then you could also, if you wanted to make a available, you know, opportunity for the public to comment. Um, through the webpage, they could do that as well. So that's the presentation, that's kind of where you're at at this point. Um, if you. Want to move forward with the notice of intent, I think it uh, I don't know, Steph, they, do they need to have a resolution of some sort?
The July second.
Okay, right, very good. So we can have a res- a fairly simple resolution prepared.
What about thirty days?
It's, yeah, yeah, it, I, it's either thirty or forty five days, I have to, they they've modified some of the the timing standards, but regardless, whatever the. Standard is, that's what it is. If you want to make it slightly longer, you could do that as well.
Would Peak Skill also be, since it's?
Um, for an action like this, I would suggest including Peak Skill, like for instance, um. With the AMS project, I included Peak Skill on the notice of intent and the secret regulations. And the town of Cortland, obviously, yeah, we get the town of Cortland, and and we'll make sure we get it to the town clerk.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Initial delivery or something, yes.
Um, if there is, um. First, who, what fire district would cover that?
Ver Plank.
Ver Plank, so we would, we'll, we'll include uh Fire, Ver Plank, uh Fire District, we did that with um. Village Square, I think they cover that district, so um. A- again, it's trying to be as inclusive as possible, as transparent as possible, the process.
Very good. And I still would like to set up, um, I've spoken to the mayor in Tarrytown and she was disappointed we didn't come that day. And I'd still like to set up uh for any of the board members that would like to go to see what Tarrytown has done on their property there.
And Sleepy Hollow.
And Sleepy Hollow.
And Sleepy Hollow, yes, yeah.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can walk, it's it's an easy walk to go from one to the other, yeah.
So yeah, whenever, whenever we could set that up, that would be great.
So Theresa?
Yes.
Are you saying we're gonna wait to do the um, until you guys go and view Tarrytown and Sleepy Hollow before you want a resolution?
No, I I I think it'll give us, you know, I don't think we need to do that, I think we can go and look. Um, just to, for our thoughts in the future. One of the reasons I I really want to look at this is because, you know, we've talked about the release of the sixty acres. That's not really out there right now, but we're hoping to push to have a a smaller release. Because there's a discussion on buffers with the spent fuel cask. So it might not be the sixty acres after all, all the stuff is on the pads now, but then also, um. There might be an opportunity on the southern part. Um, Holtech had come. Uh, and had asked us uh about ten acres, that there was a company that was interested. So it it's, it's sounding like they're interested in releasing some parcels eventually.
Especially that side.
So, you know, we want to be able to, what what do we want to see? What? And you know, I I I know we have public hearings, but maybe we could have, um, we talk about surveys. Um, that I know the recreation department will be putting a survey out soon, but maybe a survey out to the residents to, you know, out to them.
There there also, as I recall, there was a survey taken as part of the L W R. Which we included as part of our prior documentation, so you do have some.
Well, you know, so I I think just to focus on the village solely, you know, on on the village and.
Right.
You know, uh, and explain again what we're we're trying to do and then just any input that they have, so we can see what people are thinking.
Good idea.
It's their village.
Uh, just one question, Mayor, you said Holtech, there was an interest in the ten acres, is, are you talking about the data store?
Yeah, well, yeah, it it was a potential, but.
I just wanted.
You know, that's up to the board, like what they want to. So, but you know, that's, I haven't heard any updates on that.
They can't get electricity.
Yeah, that was the problem, that was the problem, they weren't sure, but you know what? Uh, it was whether or not it was, they were gonna do that, but the exciting thing was that they were looking at releasing ten acres. And it was in the total opposite side, the southern end of the property, so that was, you know, encouraging when we heard that, so, yes. That, yeah, that was gonna be the issue, the amount of uh juice, electricity that they needed to generate in there. I bet if Indian Point was open, they'd have enough power, yes. It's a source, source subject.
So would the board like to entertain a resolution for the July meeting and get this process started?
Yes.
Okay.
Put on the agenda?
Yeah, I I I'll be uh away on vacation um on July second, but I will, before I go, I'll have the resolution provided to you.
Right, perfect.
Alright, yeah, because I I've gotten through a lot of this, I haven't gotten through every page, so, but I've gotten.
Yeah, consider it uh a work in progress to some extent, um, because uh. You need to have, it's important to have input from the public, um, so, and as the process goes along. You're gonna think of things, so there will be opportunities to modify the proposed text in a number of different ways as we go through. Um, if you, if you so feel uh feel so fit.
But I I don't want them to release the property and we're like, hmm, I don't know, is that something we want there or, you know, so we're.
Right.
We're talking about it as we go forward, you know, what is it we'd like?
Yeah, and we, and we tried to be specific on uh not only the permitted principal uses, but also the special permit uses. And there's, it's the typical things that you want to see in a, in a waterfront community with retail, multifamily development. Um, uh, commercial, uh, all types of stores, restaurants, uh, that type of thing.
Yeah, the the commercial you would probably be putting, I would have to guess, more towards the southern end. Because you have a sheet rock plant there, so you.
Right.
Wouldn't necessarily be putting housing, so it's something we'll look at, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll hash it out, we'll talk about it and.
Right.
What we think and what the village, the residents think.
Can I ask one, one, one question, so I understand the process here? So we're gonna have to have a public hearing, a resolution to actually. Name us as the lead agency? No, you, um, so the the procedurally, um, you would pass a resolution stating your notice of intent to act as lead agents. Okay. You would circulate that notice with the documents that I had prepared and to all the other interested and involved agencies. And you allow thirty to forty five days, whatever the timeframe is, you allow them to respond back and. They they can't be lead agencies, so they're, you know, they'd have no objection, but they may say, oh, by the way, we do have the following comments. You could expect Westchester County, they're gonna say, we have no objection, but they're gonna come up with a list of 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 comments for you to consider. Right, then that gives you an opportunity to say, hey, you know what, um, maybe we should modify the text in response to some of these comments. Okay. Right, and and then, and then once you feel comfortable, then you would schedule a public hearing. You don't need to have, schedule a public hearing to do the notice of intent to act as lead agents. Okay. Yeah.
You're right, it's a work in progress.
Yes, right. That's all, okay, thank you, alright, very good, thank you.
Sorry for the wait.
No, right, alright. Have a happy fourth.
Yeah.
Enjoy your vacation, thank you. I need it.
And and that voice you heard, that was our attorney, Stephanie Portias, she's uh. The area she lives in was hit with a pretty powerful storm, she's been out of electricity, she's back online, but. Uh, not everything is up and running, so that's why Stephanie is, uh, is your air conditioning running now, Stephanie?
I hope so.
I know, oh, doesn't sound good. Alright, so good luck with all that. Alright, yeah, thank you. Okay, next is a discussion on returning, uh, the returning lifeguards, increasing their pay by fifty cents an hour.
Yeah, this, um, I had a manager, I just had a manager's meeting a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the um lack of lifeguards in the county and the difficulty everybody's having. Um, right now, we're good, but what happened just a week ago, we lost a lifeguard to another community, but they pay higher. So um, I'm recommending if the board approved it fifty cents, I actually, highest step is like eighteen dollars an hour. This we're paying, other p- other communities are paying twenty two to twenty five dollars an hour.
Really, wow.
You have to get the lifeguards. Seventeen, sorry, seventeen is the highest.
Well, seventeen is the highest for us?
Yeah, yep.
So, uh, so what's fifty cents gonna be?
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to the pool director and they, as she said, if we, if, you know, sense our financial position, if she has fifty cents, she thinks she can keep a lot of lifeguards. So she's happy, she's, she'll be happy with fifty cents at this point, but we've lost one already.
The difference over two months, you know.
It's up to the board, but I think, I think it's a little low compared to whatever it is.
I think fifty cents.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, you know, I maybe we want to keep them and the problem is, towards the end of August, the kids are going back to college, we lose a lot of.
All the high school kids that are certified, yeah.
Yeah.
They're certified and everything, exactly.
Yeah, I think fifty cents.
Yeah, I think that's a little.
We can do better too, absolutely, I I love to hear you say, I say that, I appreciate.
We just round it to a dollar.
I mean, they are lifeguards. That's right.
And they're trained, and they have, a lot of them have experience, yeah, we need them.
You'll make them very happy, if you get a dollar, they'll be very happy.
Yeah, I agree. And they still need to teach some people here in the village how to swim.
Everyone knows that to me.
They need two dollars now.
Maybe you need to pay them a lot more, they're going to teach me how to swim.
I'm gonna say, what is it, they want a dollar, we'll put it on the July second meeting. Perfect, uh, you guys are great.
Very, very much.
Alright, cool, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Four dollars a day.
Yeah. How many hours do they work?
It really varies, some four hours a day and some eight hours a day.
Okay. Yeah.
And they're returning.
Yeah.
Somebody wanted to keep them.
Yeah, try and keep them, sure.
Yeah.
So what about the people that just started this year?
So what do they start, what kind of experience do they have?
Right now, they start at fif- fifteen, and everybody else starts at sixteen.
But when they're coming in, what kind of experience? Are they like brand new, they just had their training, their W S I I, W S I and all that stuff?
Well, they potentially could have been some, somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah.
How many, how many do we have? Twenty-three lifeguards? And out of those twenty-three, how many are new, do you know? More or less? That's a right. Yeah. So what did we decide we would give those that are returning?
Dollar more, a dollar instead of fifty cents.
And do two dollars and then give the ones that are new an extra buck?
Why don't we just do it a dollar gross to board?
Yeah.
Whatever anybody wants to do.
Yeah, because I I'd like to see them.
If they're leaving to go somewhere else where the pay is better.
And you gotta keep in mind too, these, these kids are laying out the money to get certified upfront, so, and it it's not cheap. So, let's, let's do what we gotta do to, to attract them and to keep them, so.
Thank you.
I agree. I volunteered to get relicensed again, but nobody wanted me to do it, so. Anyhow, moving along.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um just a few things, I'm gonna be very quick, uh just want to touch on a few things, um. We started working, and Sharon knows, on the Welcome to Buchanan little booklet that we wanted to give out to new residents, and we've had a lot of new residents. Um English, Spanish, we have Jackie who can help us, uh but if you could give a copy to each board member. And Peter, what I need for you to do is on there, there's. People that don't know what they need permits for, so if you could just do. You know, the top five, top ten things that you see that people are doing without permits, so for example, maybe a roof, maybe black topping their driveway. I I think a lot of people don't know, and it's not only, not only the new people, but I think people that have lived here don't know, so what you've seen. That, you know, people are confused about, you know, and then they, just to help them, because when we do this welcome uh to Buchanan book. We're going to send it out to all the residents the first time, and then after that, we'll have to keep track of the new people. Who are coming in so that they get it and they're they're on the same pages as all of us, so.
Good.
Okay. Um also, Dan, we had talked a while back, and I know you were very surprised, but we didn't have an employee handbook. Um I think we started that too, right, an employee handbook?
Yes.
So the only problem was, I think we had to show it to the union too. So if that's something you could also forward to the board that they can review, I mean, this doesn't have to be done Tuesday night, but I'm saying, let's let's keep this in the loop of things. You know, um to resolve here. Um I will be working, and I don't know, Bob, probably you're you're uh the liaison to the police department, when I was at the N I C O M meeting. Um there was a discussion on procedures, there was a discussion on on certain protocol that you should have. And I was in one of them and it was about emergency management. And just seeing how the weather has changed and what Stephanie had to deal with, with trees down, wires down and things like that. We really need to update our emergency plan. We haven't done it in a while. When we had Indian Point active, there was a very uh strong emergency response from the state, National Guard, you name it. They were coming in if there was an an issue, but you know, we're seeing the weather change here and um. We need to have more of a direction, um the fire department has been good uh over the years, I've asked, so if we get into a sandy. Storm situation, there's no power, and at for those of you that remember that, it was bitter, bitter cold the end of October. And I was ready to leave the house with my mom at that point, and we were going wherever there was power, because it was that cold. So um I've spoken to the fire chief, uh the police chief. And uh we need to formulate more of a uh and N I C O M also recommends us to some type of a. Uh a plan that everyone knows, if something happens, this is what they need to do, and so there's a procedure. So we'll be working on that, um and then we'll bring it to the board with the our findings. And um see if the board has comments too, so that we have uh one of the things that they asked, um so if there's really some type of a. An emergency, what funds are available, um what contractors perhaps you would have if a lot of trees are down, if the highway department. So there's a whole, there's a whole procedure to it, and N I C O M has um a form um that you can follow with that, so. Um just seeing all the crazy stuff going on, I think it's time, you know, and then the village hall, so everyone knows if there's a situation. We can't, we can't um like uh house people, but we can call it a cooling center or a heating center. So know the second floor, we're powered here by a generator, you know, so, but we'll we'll get more formalized with that. Um what else? Let's see, wait a minute, and the only other thing I have is um we need to congratulate our building inspector. He is now officially a building inspector, so congratulations. He he passed his test, so Peter is officially a building inspector. So Marcus, we have to speak to you of what the process is going forward. Um. What we're, you know, I'm not sure, so we haven't, the board hasn't had a a discussion on that, are we still um keeping um. Brian, so there's there's like been no discussion on. Going forward now that Peter is the building inspector, so.
Uh okay, so uh Peter has been at the provisional building inspector for over a year.
Right.
Uh Brian has been the assistant building inspector, uh we was waiting for him to pass the exam. Um so at this point, Brian's been the assistant building inspector. Um that discussion really has to go with Peter, because I think Peter would like to keep. Brian around because to help with plans, then code enforcement, everything else, it's a board decision, he's just gonna put a lot of impact on his department. That's really a discussion that I would say, I would say we keep him, he's part-time, we're not paying any benefits, he's working seventeen hours a day, a week. That's all he's working, and he's helping with the office that off on Mondays and Thurs- Mondays and Fridays, he's just there two ti- twice a week.
So is he full-time Monday and Friday?
Seventeen, no, seventeen and a half hours.
Time Monday and and just over half a day on Friday.
Oh, all right.
And during that time, he goes out on calls, um reviews plans, uh does uh code enforcement, fire inspections he's doing. Um so Peter knows better than I do, it's his department, so you can explain some of the stuff, other stuff that he does.
I think I had given a list to that to Bob and he had read it at one of the meetings one night, but. Plan review, basic code enforcement, accessory apartments, fire inspections, oil-water separators, grease traps. Complaints and gives me time in the office to not have to go out in the field on Mondays and Fridays, so I could concentrate on the excessive amount of paperwork I have. That's pretty much what it is.
Okay, and are you, do you, are you out in the field every day?
Um I'm in and out all day, every day.
Okay, all right. Lots going on around here. All right, good. And then we'll uh we'll have a further discussion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the public knows that Brian and Peter were both building inspectors, they had all the certifications. The only part that was missing was the civil service exam, so I'll make sure, well, I've heard other stories regarding that. When it, when is Peter gonna be certified? He was, he's been certified.
So he had to pass the the civil service title.
No, no.
Yeah, you've had your certifications, but.
For years.
Civil service titles.
It's just a civil service title, building inspector, which he had to had to pass, but they're both. Under New York State Department of State, building inspectors, so I want to make sure we understood that.
All right, that's all I have, that's it. All right, who, what do you, Anthony, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh not much, just um. Are we gonna have a discussion with Peter about Brian then, later on?
We'll go in the next session?
Exactly, we'll do that, okay. Um. No, I really don't have much, it's happy Fourth of July, I won't be attending next week's meeting, I have.
On vacation?
No.
No.
It's fireworks season, so I will be. Um but I want to just wish the public a happy Fourth of July and um stay safe and and healthy. That's all.
Happy birthday, America.
I want to do the same, I want to wish everyone a great and safe Fourth of July. And Dan, I'm very excited about your vision, I think it will bring a lot of promise to our residents. Not only in terms of revenue, but it will have staying power, where the residents won't leave. To go put their money somewhere else, we could keep it within our village, and if there's anything that I can do to support you, including serving on your committee, please count on me.
Absolutely, thank you, well done.
Bob, what do you have for us too?
I don't really have too much, just have a couple of questions for Marcus pertaining to the a couple of properties. The one on Blake, the house on Blakeley Avenue, right before Green Town Road.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, uh there's a house on Blakeley Avenue, left-hand side. That's, you can barely see anymore, it's totally overgrown with weeds, what's going on with that house?
The greeny-yellow one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That's, the town is gonna foreclose on that, yeah.
So sort of like the one that was on Bannon Avenue for that many years, so let's uh, you know, you know the old saying.
This one, the roof.
At least try to clean it up a little bit, get the town on there a little bit.
We could try to clean it up, to add it, I mean, the board can can authorize to clean it up, and then we've put it on a tax bill, and we hope that when they sell the property, we get the money back.
I think the town, after a while, was taking care of the property on uh Bannon Avenue that Dan was just talking about.
That's after, yeah, that's when they got ready to sell the property, that's when they did it.
Yeah.
They let the property sit for a year, I mean, I walked in there.
I know.
I walked in there when.
The same thing, there's there were trees growing through the front porch.
Yeah, the only time they get interested in it is when they put it on the market.
Right, okay, that there and the house, uh the Preston House on Albany Post Road?
Oh, that's the one they used to, the sun or something, what's going on, yeah, any update on that?
They they, he paid to clean up the property and it's, the taxes are paid, there's nothing else that can be done at this point, I can't go.
They cleaned up the property, right?
The back goes, that's actually, there's a junkyard back there.
The back?
There was debris back there, collection over the years, bicycles, things, a stove, you know, but again. Taxes are paid, what are we?
No, no, but if it's a property maintenance issue, I think that's the question.
We don't have any codes, that kind of.
Discussed that with him and he was, the house was going on the market when the paperwork was cleared.
So what we.
After the mother died, I'll have to check back in.
So what we, yeah, so we could do check, when he's not willing to do it, violate them, and then the board can authorize to clean the property up as well and add it, he's paid his taxes, so.
Yeah, right.
Worst case scenario, we can, maybe they refuse to clean it after a violation is issued, then we can hire a contractor who ought to clean it up, and then we add it to the tax, add to his tax bill.
All right.
Yep.
That's all I had right now.
And that's the property on Albany Post Road next to the.
Close to the firehouse.
It's Metro, the Metro Therapy.
Yes.
Metro Therapy is looking right at their back window at that mess in the back.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Dan, what do you have for us?
Um I just want to say, Bob, thank you for bringing that up about the properties, but if I remember correctly, in in real relation to the house that was on Bannon Avenue, that was a similar circumstance. I believe we wrote to the board, the town of Cortland board, to try and get them to move the process along in in relation to the foreclosure, so maybe, I don't know, could we look at maybe. Doing the same.
I think it's next on the list, because I think the town now. The town dragged their feet for many years, but I think every two years now, they're on, they're on a system now for every two years.
Yeah, because if.
And that one's in worse shape on on Blakeley.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, because if you remember, that that one on Bannon was the, one of the first things I kind of brought up when I. Came on as as a board member, but maybe, you know.
Well, give them a lot of credit, it's looking, it's looking a lot better, they're doing a a nice job on Bannon there.
It's absolutely uh.
Yeah.
Quite a transformation, but uh I just want to say, uh you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, the possibility of what we. Have in front of us and and forming the uh committee for the uh business and economic development, but I uh also want to wish everybody a. Happy and safe Fourth of July, and congratulations to all of our local residents whose. Child graduated. And um let's, everybody have a safe summer.
And there was only one thing I wanted to mention, uh the June thirteenth D O uh decommissioning oversight board meeting, I would like to thank two residents that came out. Uh got in front of the room, spoke up for the village of Buchanan, and you know, and Lisa Wentz is one of them, Lisa's at these meetings all the time, she's very well-versed. In what's going on over there with the whole decommissioning process, and so you know Lisa, there is. A company that is working on, they're very interested in coming here, uh to. He explained to me an electron on on a proton, proton, whatever, but they can help with the water. Um this, the getting the tritium out of the water, so it's a very interesting process, so. They might be speaking at the next D O B meeting, and the other person was John Bell, got up and and spoke for the village, so. It was good to see residents there speaking up for the village, so it was a good meeting. Um, okay, Marcus, do you have anything before I put it out to comments from the floor?
No, a couple of uh just updates for the for the board, don't probably cares, um the oil tank was removed in front of village hall. It's a three thousand gallon tank, it was pretty big, um they had to remove part of the sidewalk, uh and they also. They also took out a drainage line, so it wasn't marked. D P W took care of the drainage line already today, that's been repaired, it's been backfilled, uh they're gonna put a sidewalk in, D P W is gonna do that. Um the digital sign, uh we got the um, we got electrician ready to go. Uh talked to the D P W, they'll do the trenching, so it'll save us about six thousand dollars to do the trenching, they'll do it themselves. Um also, the installation of the sign, we got a price to install the sign, about. Almost five thousand dollars.
Really?
They're gonna do it, we're gonna try to do that ourselves as well, um so D P W feels now they got full stack, they probably could do that themselves. Uh the good news, Peter worked with Tony for the, all of the water boiler replacement, I had to replace the water, the water tank. Uh the hot water heater, I'm sorry, and we're gonna go to a heat on demand, Peter designed everything, and Tony's installing everything. The price we got from the same company was twenty-six thousand dollars to do that, we did did that on on house as well. Thanks to Peter and Tony, that working together have been great, and Tony bring labor, we do the work. It the the pipes were leaking, they were riding out, he replaced everything with copper, it looks beautiful, it looks very nice and clean. Um so D P W has saved us, just on this, almost thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, just for some of this stuff, so. I gotta thank the D P W guys to do this kind of stuff.
We got a good crew, they're good workers.
And I gotta thank Peter, Peter actually got the equipment, um his contract, his contractor connections that he had, he got to have the price to get as many probably as anybody else, so. It worked out very well for everybody, so.
That's great news.
Thank you.
That's great news, thanks, guys.
Got all sets of oil and price a little bit.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
I get the money back.
Thank you, Peter.
Comments from the floor, any comments from the floor? No, okay. All right, um I'm going to uh make a motion to go into executive session for personnel or anything else, Marcus?
Uh yeah, personnel.
Personnel.
I got about a couple.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you and have a great Buchanan day.